One nation. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, part of that'll be off.
You went so fast.
I would say part of everything's off. Anyway, this is the Mahoning County Commissioners Hearing Room, regular meeting number fourteen, Thursday, August, April seventh, ten a.m. We started with the pledge, and do I have any public comments? Three minutes, please. Public comments? Yes. State your name and address for the record. Sure.
You better.
I thought I recognized you.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Mark Luke. I live at eight five six eight Glenwood Avenue in Boarman, Ohio. I am here as the chairperson for the Boarman Memorial Day activities for this year. So this year on Monday, May thirtieth, Boarman Township will be celebrating Memorial Day. Memorial Day is a special day in our country's history. It's actually our only national day of mourning, which we choose to set aside and stop that day to thank all those veterans who gave their lives, surrendered them to the altar of freedom that we may preserve the way we live and our freedoms in this country. So in Boarman Township, we will be having our one hundred and eighteenth annual consecutive. We never stopped since nineteen oh four in Boarman Township. The news this year is we are bringing back our parade, our Memorial Day parade. So we're excited about that. And part of my responsibilities as chairperson is to get the proper permissions and make the proper announcements regarding that. And there are several county departments I need to get that information to, so it was convenient to come here today, let the administration, the Engineers Department, the Sheriff's Department know about our plans. So the plans for that day are to block off State Route seven and State Route two twenty-four during the parade. We've received permission from the High Department of Transportation, and part of that is our responsibility is to let the township, I'm sorry, let the county and the appropriate bodies know. And we look forward to the parade that year, it's at ten a.m., starts off at ten a.m. sharp, and then we proceed over to Boarman Park for our service. I'd like to announce also our speaker this year is Jim Gutterby, and he is a retired teacher from the Boarman Local School District. He is a Marine Corps infantryman veteran in country for three and a half years during the Vietnam War. He'll be sharing some very good messages with us this morning of service and of thankfulness for our country. So I want to make those announcements this morning, let everyone know what's going on and the appropriate bodies at the county level as well. I have some information sheets that are set on the table there, if anyone's interested from the county, anyone from the county?
Why don't you give Nancy, our clerk, a copy for the record, and then she will turn it over to our administrative person in our office?
Okay.
Thank you.
And then they will pass it on to us.
Sure. Are there any other questions that I could answer for anyone regarding this?
I just want to credit you with what you do in Boarman, the World Civic Association, and being involved as much as you are, and always keeping us included. So I just wanted to say, and a lot of years of friendship.
Yeah, as well. Thank you.
Do you present anything to the speaker, proclamations or anything? We could put something together on behalf of the county as well.
Well, I'll leave that up to your discretion if you'd like to.
Why don't you send us, you send us the bio on him, and we could definitely put a proclamation on his behalf to honor.
Right.
I will do that.
Him as the speaker as well.
Okay. Terrific. I was working with Holly at your office. If I could email her, she was terrific as well. Thank you. You know, government sometimes will get a bad rap. Sometimes it's deserved, sometimes it's not. But you know what? The departments that I've had to deal with have been terrific, and everyone's been fine. So one-on-one and working with our departments has been a pleasure, and I appreciate that as a resident and a taxpayer. And I'll make a further comment, you know, it's a, it's a privilege to be an American. It's a blessing to be an American, and to be able to participate in these types of things in life is very good. We will get thousands of people along the parade route, not as many that come to the service in Boarman Park. So we would encourage people to do that. The parade is great, it's Americana, it's a wonderful time to gather, but that service is where you hear the real message of service, and you, we recognize our veterans, and it's very important for people to attend that as well.
You know, I haven't missed, I'm sorry, I haven't missed one in Austin Town in thirty years, you know, and, and we started at the high school. And, and, or, I'm sorry, we started up at Marx in the parking lot, and we walked to the high school. And then at the high schools where all the, the speeches given by the veterans and stuff, and, and we honor there, and it's, it's just amazing, you know, because what, we end up at the location of where the memorial and the, and the service is on behalf of the veterans. And, and it's, it's always heartwarming and, you know, and, and we, we have to fight with some of the old-time veterans, keep them from walking, you know, because it's, you know, they're still, you know, gung-ho, and, you know, we, we all know at a certain age you really need to ride and not walk, you know, but, you know, we tell everybody, look, there's no candy being thrown, there's nothing, this isn't a Fourth of July parade. You know, this is where we walk and we honor, you know, and, and it's always, it's always great. So thank you, Mark.
That's true. Thank you.
And thank you for that, but I have to tell you this, that the, the group that we have in Mahoning County is a team, all elected officials and appointed authority, we're all, we all work together. So when one person, one department knows something, we all do. So the word will be passed on to the other electeds, and in email to them with the information.
Terrific. I appreciate that very much.
Thanks for keeping us posted. Anything you do out there, please feel free to come in or send a, Holly a, a message, and we'll, we'll try to all attend.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Public comment? State your name. Three, three minutes. Anyone else have any public comments?
I'm meant to be the last one.
I believe you will be. Do you want to make your public comment? Do you want to get up and make three, three minutes?
No one else, so.
Please come up and state your full name and address for the record.
Aye, aye. Do not wish to disclose my address, but I live in this area, so if that's not okay, I don't have to make my comment.
Is there anything that would deal with a department or something we could help you with after the meeting?
I think it's, it's just a question. Can I just ask the question?
Yes.
Okay. Does Mahoning County have a defendant, a public defender's office?
Yes, we do.
Where is it?
You would probably have to talk to the prosecutor's office.
I've been there many times. Is there a prosecutor's office?
In Mahoning County? Is it a Mahoning County issue? Yes. And after the meeting, we'll give you the, everything you need to have to contact them if you'd like to wait. If not, you can go to the second floor, over in the next building.
Second floor? I have gone up and down, and then I have not been able to find the public defender's office or the prosecutor's.
What to do is go to our office, talk to Holly, and she will give you the phone number, and the deputy will instruct you at that point.
So I went online, and I, I found an address, and I went, they said that it's only public defender for the federal court cases. Why, my next question that would be, why are the prosecutor and the defender's offices on, not visible? Normally, not normally, wouldn't they be more helpful if they're more visible?
They would be. You need to talk to them. We really don't have anything to do with what goes on in the prosecutor's office, other than the fact that I know they have that. So if you go there, they'll give you the phone number to address.
Do you have a complaint or a crime that you would like to tell the prosecutor about? Is that what you're asking?
No, I just want, I just want there to be, I, I do have a physical basis for the concern that I have. I noticed that there are many courthouse in this county, and there's jail right in the middle, and, and I, the prosecutor's office, the, the public defender's office, they're not.
He's really not a public defender, is you thinking? He's a prosecutor from the county.
What I'm looking is a team of lawyers who will be there to defend the public, should there be an issue because there are police officers out there, the footrooms out there. And then I, when those components are in place, the public defender's office has to be open and visible. Otherwise, what we, what if I get caught, and will I be sent, do I get to the judge for?
Peeing in the public? We really don't know that, but you can go there, and they will, but they will give you the information where to go, is what I'm saying.
Prosecutor's office.
I would just be getting a phone number. I would like an address.
Well, they'll give you that as well. We don't have it. We don't have it.
Can I, excuse me?
That would be a legitimate offense.
Yes. The court, the common police court or the court will assign a public defender. We use various attorneys within the county, and they have a listing of the, they have, they have a listing of those. We don't have.
I mean, is, these are lawyers out in private practice, the court just assigned. What if they're busy and they don't have time? Because they have the clients, they have to help first before they can help anybody who is assigned, be a, be a attorney.
Yeah, the county doesn't actually have a public defender's office.
No.
So there is not a public defender's office in Mahoning County. You'd have to go through, like Audrey said, each one is assigned.
If Mahoning County established a public defender's office.
No, there is not.
And whoever who needs, needs help could just go to the public defender's office.
That would be like an indigenous attorney's office.
Not by anybody.
All right. What, what you need to do is?
No, I don't need to do that.
Okay.
Mahoning County needs to establish that defender's office, that public defender's office.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have another, no, I have another question. Why do you let yourself be feeling like that? You should have objected from the beginning. Anyway, see you.
Three minutes.
You guys can talk, you can stop, you know.
Sorry about that. Anyone else? Not hearing anyone. Approval of the previous minutes of board meeting number thirteen, Thursday, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and approval of bills for payment.
Motion approved.
Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Tofficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditsler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidiogadi?
Yes. Number one, advertisement forbids recycling. Lou?
Morning, Commissioners. This is our advertisement to bid out our drop-off recycling program, as well as our institutional paper program. They're both front-load recycling service programs.
Thank you. Advertisement forbids? Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved advertisement for bids.
Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Tofficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditsler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidiogadi?
Journal entries, number one. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved journal entries, number one.
Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Tofficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditsler?
Yes.
Yes. Number two, agreements. A. Commissioners, O and B.
Commissioners, this is approval of a comprehensive settlement agreement and release of all claims.
B, convention and visitors bureau.
Good morning, everyone. Letter B is an agreement with Travel Boards, who handles all the advertising for the Ohio Turnpike, and we would like to place an ad in the twenty twenty-two Turnpike map, and the total is twenty-seven hundred dollars, non-general.
Okay, thank you. C, D, E, and F, engineers.
Good morning, everybody. C is an agreement with Lake Erie Construction for twenty twenty-two garden rail repairs in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. D is an agreement with Southwestern Development Company for the purchase of real property needed for Western Reserve Road market to South Avenue project in the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty. E is an agreement with Greenham Peterson Incorporated for underwater bridge inspection. That's in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred. And F is an agreement with Public Consulting LLC for bridge inspection on the K-Frame Bridge located at Powersway, in the amount of two thousand dollars, and these are all non-general funds.
Thank you.
I thought Genetti did the underwater bridge inspections.
I thought he said you were getting trained to do that.
He wanted to tie a brick on my leg to do it.
Is that what the gear is in your office?
Looking to comment on that.
And G, Joe?
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement with the Wattsburg Solution for purchase of new batteries for our UPS backup system for the computers in the jail, an estimated amount of nine thousand six hundred and ten dollars, non-general.
Okay, thank you. Number two, agreements A through G. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved agreements.
Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Tofficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditsler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidiogadi?
Yes. Number three, road closings. A, engineers?
Yes.
This is to amend general entry twenty-two oh three oh five four, to include North Bend Road to the various road closures for culvert replacements prior to the start of twenty twenty-two with the W C and local funding payment.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Number three, road closings. A, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved road closing.
Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Tofficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditsler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidiogadi?
Yes. Number one, resolutions additions. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, number one additions.
Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Tofficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditsler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidiogadi?
Yes. Number two, resolutions. A, Commissioners, O and B.
Commissioners, item A is a resolution to approve the second addendum and expenditure with the Mahoning County Community Action Court, MYCAP, for additional ERA, emergency rental assistance, funding for emergency rental and utility assistance programs in the amount of eighty-five, eight hundred, eighty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. This will be the final allocation for the AR one funding, and then we'll have the remainder of the AR two, so we will be on track for our guidelines. Item B is a resolution to vacate a part of Northwood Avenue in Austintown Township.
And item C?
Item C is a resolution authorizing contribution of seventy thousand from sanitary engineer sewer fund and two hundred and twenty thousand in the general fund for a total amount of two hundred and ninety thousand to a support O S U extension.
They're here.
I know, I have Eric here today, if you would like.
Eric, do you want to say anything?
So I brought some of the staff today, so our staff continues to grow.
I bet they brought you.
Actually, that is true. Kind of like, you know, how you guys operate.
Carol brings both of them.
That's right.
Do you want to introduce your staff?
Yeah, so, well, also for Beth, everybody knows Beth Smith, our four-H educator.
Right.
I thought Beth Smith was the judge.
In my spare time.
Yeah, it's not a very common name. Kristen Eisenhower is our urban educator. So we haven't actually had her in a, a meeting except for one at the office, so it's, it's good to get her out more now that the pandemic is winding down, hopefully over, and see where that goes. So Kristen is doing work with all the inner-city schools and even Sebring, where we have a lot of lower-income folks that we're trying to help with everything you can imagine, workforce development, Money Matters with the kids, and lots of growing plants and things in the city as well. And then Candace Bolivananta is from Austintown.
Yay, God's country.
And she is replacing, if you remember, we had a, a office person out front for a long time, and she retired, and so Candace is replacing that position. And then Alex Kennedy, who, she'll explain, she knows a lot of yous about you guys.
Uh-oh.
With some family ties. And Alex is our new program assistant. She's helping with some of our inner-city projects and lots of marketing projects. So Kristen has some kind of impact numbers to show you from, from twenty twenty. So when you talk about investments and extension, it's about a two-to-one match is what the estimate, I'll, I'll have some numbers finalized for Audrey here in a couple weeks. Of the biggest thing match is we have six nutrition educators, so that's the SNAP education program and expanded nutrition program. Those folks do classes throughout the entire county. On the handout, there's a, a map of all those sites, whether it's all the four-H clubs and nutrition sites, all those, and those nutrition programs are paid completely by state and federal dollars. And all the programs we put on there, too, our cooperation with what's happening at the fairgrounds, we, we love that the support for that new building, our big endowment event that we had, our final one, Mr. Anthony's, I understand we're really thinking about the fairgrounds, that'll be our site, it'll have bathrooms.
I think the bathroom's still on.
Yes. And we'll be able to help with a lot of our bigger events. Kristen and I and Alex are working on what we can do more with the schools. We have applied for a big grant with the High Department of Education to bring those kids into the fairgrounds and do more STEM education kind of days and programs there, so a lot of one-on-one training that we're not able to do at this point in time. So the support of that building helps us to do it wing to shot.
And then if you need any assistance or help on that, feel free to call upon us.
It's always that connection.
This is a big deal for me.
It's always that connection to our biggest school district, and we have, we already have partnerships with Camel, Sebring, Struthers, all those school districts. It's always whatever help we can get to, to make those connections that are needed in Youngstown City. We are extensively in Youngstown City through our nutrition programs, and those folks are going on a weekly basis, if not two or three days a week, to do classes in those classrooms.
How great is that? Thank you for all your work for us.
Appreciate your continued support and let us know how we can help.
Great program, great event the other night. I didn't win anything.
Sorry.
A lot of thanks.
You're not supposed to win, you're supposed to give.
I give, too. So I just didn't win to give.
We missed you, Dave. We know you were probably dealing with that new Chick-fil-A, right?
You know what? I, I'll tell you, the other morning when I was on my way here, it was around lunchtime when I was coming up here, I've never been to a Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A.
What?
Never been there. Never done it. So I've, I've never been to a Chick-fil-A, and, and I thought, well, I'm gonna go try to get, go through the one in Austintown. So I've tried it maybe four or five times in Boarman, and I pull into that parking lot, and there's four lines, and it's a cluster. And, and I get in there, and I, and I'm there maybe three minutes, and I go, oh, I ain't doing this. And I pull out, and I drive up to Taco Bell. I have never gone to a Chick-fil-A. So I thought, well, I'm gonna go to the one in Austintown, looks like they're pretty efficient, they're getting people through. I, I looked from the street, and there was about twelve cars in each line. So I pull into there, and I'm in line, and as I'm coming around, they don't have any of the menu boards up yet. I don't have a clue as to what they have. So I'm, I'm sitting there in line, and people are up there ordering their food, you know, well, you know, I, I take forever because I don't know, I can't look at the menu as I'm coming up. And then there's a young lady that comes. Google it. Well, and there's a young lady, several of them that were out in the parking lot, and they were passing out little plastic menus, because she said, we don't have our menu placard boards up yet. So I get the menu, and I thought, well, I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna bring Audrey a salad, and I'm gonna bring a bunch of boxes of nuggets for people to sample, you know? So I got four boxes of ten nuggets, and I got, I got three salads. I figure I'm getting one for me and my wife. And one for Audrey, right? So that Southwest salad looked pretty good. So I said, I need three Southwest salads, but make two of them not spicy chicken, you know, just garden chicken. And, and they said, okay, we can do that, you know? So, so I get up, and my bill was like sixty dollars. For three salads and four boxes of nuggets, right? And I get up, and, and I, and I said to them, can you put the salads in different bags? Because I was bringing Audrey one, taking one to my wife, one for me. Well, needless to say, when I got to the county to bring the nuggets in, all the salads were wrong. So I got, I got one salad with spicy, one with regular, one salad with no chicken, and I thought.
Did he call you, Anthony?
No.
He didn't call me either.
I brought him up here. I brought him up here, and then the nuggets, you opened the nuggets, I mean, they were like ten bucks or eight bucks for a box of ten nuggets. I thought they were decent, and they're about as big as your thumbnail.
Oh, will you behave?
You know, and?
We all enjoyed everything.
Everything was very good.
But, you know, the chicken, I tasted the nuggets when they came here, and they were, they were.
As we, as we move on.
You know, when I started to tell a story about, about you, Eric, though.
And they forgot.
When I got to the, yeah, when I got to the chicken nuggets instead. The, I wanted to ask a question.
Hurry on.
Because I had a guy, you know, I, my yard is a mess, because I have nothing but trees in it.
Here he goes.
So I'm helping, I'm helping people to understand.
The clinic is open till noon today. So. We have five, five volunteers staffing phones, and if you can get back to Andrew or pick up a phone, they'll answer any gardening question you have, or buy whatever bug you find.
No, they, they told me, because I can't, I, I put seed down every year, and the guy that comes over, came over, I asked him, come over and see why I can't grow grass. He said, you know, if you take about five or six plugs of your dirt, take it down to your, have a trade extension. And, and he said, they'll tell you what your soil needs. And I thought, you know, me of all people, you know, have never done that, you know? And, and I interact with you all the time about it, and, and, you know, with Ohio State, so. Coming with my dirt.
His phone number's on the.
Coming with my dirt.
Soil.
Not dirt, soil.
All right.
So, and, and sorry we're a couple minutes late today, but exciting news, our fifty trees for the Campus of Care arrived yesterday.
Beautiful.
So Jeff is working on getting those, so the county, working with Campus of Care Project, fifteen new trees there, thirty new trees at the St. Pat's Orchard.
These are the apple trees.
Apple trees, and there's ten Honeycrisp.
Favorite.
Even though I didn't really want to buy those.
Why?
Somebody talked me into it. We can discuss that later. And then a few others, it's one of those smaller urban orchards. So we have five urban orchards that are really growing within the city, and that now includes the Campus of Care.
Does that, did any, anything ever come of the property on Pershing with you guys?
So the city, the city land bank has that right now, and that's one of the things we keep pushing with Jeff.
Jeff McCord.
With in the future. And as that grows.
We don't.
The growth farm at Flying High has, has really just keeps growing.
Right.
And they have the new food truck workers that we use for their pop-up markets.
Right.
That's gonna make a, a big leap in providing more fresh produce in our lower-income areas that they can drive into a community setup shop and sell. So we're hoping that in the long term, that'll be, they'll expand more properties.
Well, because.
That was what with your ARPA funds.
Yes. That's because I asked about that, because five of those or six of those lots, we donated. I don't, my brother and I, to them. And I wondered about the, the hill part, which would be great, because the water would drain right into the, right into.
Once there's ability to, there's already a well on that property.
Yes, there is. It's on our property.
So.
And I believe if it's checked, it could probably be viable.
So if not, Jeff, if there's another group that's interested in it as well, we're ready to help them out. We can still get a few trees, these are commercial trees that are a lot cheaper.
Okay. I might check with St. Anthony property, they have all that property around there. Perfect. All right, thank you.
Excellent.
I know that was off the beaten path, but everybody knows it now. D Prosecutor's Office, jobs and family services, Audrey?
Okay, I'll, I'll take it.
Okay.
Okay, prosecutors, good morning Commissioners, Audrey Nancy. Prosecutor's Office slash job and family services, resolution approving the addendum to the two thousand and twenty-one West Law Thompson Reuters Agreement for online subscription and publication services in the estimated amount of three thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and three cents, prosecutors, and two thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars fourteen cents for job and family services.
Thank you, Audrey. F, sanitary? Tara? E, I'm sorry, E and F, thanks, Nance.
Good morning, everyone. The letter E is a resolution to reject all the bids received on March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Record of bids, resolution twenty-two zero three zero one nine. This was for the Five Points Compensation Improvement Project, number four ninety, located in Boardman, Poland, and Springfield Townships, Mahoning County, and authorizing the purchasing director to re-advertise. A letter F is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of thirteen thousand six fifty-six and seventy-eight cents to Air Gas Inc. This was for emergency deliveries of bulk liquid oxygen at the Meander wastewater treatment plant while our compressor was being repaired.
Thank you, Tara. Number two, resolutions, A through F, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved resolutions.
Second?
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Do we have any elected officials or department heads that would like to say anything at this point? Hearing none? Do you want to introduce your friends?
Sure. Mr. Dice, my good friend from Columbiana County, welcome.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Wagner, welcome from Columbiana County, it's a pleasure to have you here, both you gentlemen.
Thank you for coming. This is how a real meeting's happening.
We were just commenting about that. You know, I was at the Columbiana County Commissioners Meeting yesterday, it's not like this.
Two minutes and done?
I was on one, nine minutes. Nine minutes. And no agenda like this.
Really? We're at Columbiana.
I need to come up and talk to you.
Well, you know what, you need to go to Trumbull next and then compare the three.
I have to think about that.
Make sure, make sure you pack a lunch. And, and, and bring a blanket, sit in the corner, it's like a picnic, you know.
Oh, really, it's like a picnic?
Yeah.
Yeah. You can read it all on the website.
It's like a reality show.
It's not like any picnic, any of us have ever. Let's just put it this way, very gentle. It's one piece of paper. And it'll have, it doesn't spell out stuff like this. Like they had travel for, it didn't say who traveled, how much it was, nothing. But when you go to the minutes, it's all spelled out like this. One of my biggest issues running for commissioner in Columbiana County is transparency. That is not transparent.
Well, what we do is when people see this agenda, and I, I usually say this twice a year, even if I'm not up here as a chair, we have what you call it's. It's a tracking, which we all look at prior to these meetings, maybe weeks in advance, Nancy puts together for us that have everything that we will be voting on in the future. And the explanation, if any one of us has a question, when we meet, we go over all of this.
Right.
All the tracking issues here, all the resolutions, anything that's coming up. If we have issues with, that we call those department heads in and we go over prior to the meeting.
Yeah, I love the way you did the Zoom meeting here with all the.
And then we do this at our meeting.
Yeah, that, that, that was fantastic, the way you had all the department heads. Of course, we don't have the technology in Columbiana County to do that.
Well.
But you could.
They'd be good, yeah. I agree.
All right, well, okay. Thank you for coming. Anybody else? Anybody else? Dave, Anthony?
No, you know, I just wanted to mention, you know, it was nice, Mark Luke came here from the Boardman Civic Association and, and the Memorial Day Parade and Veterans Day. And, you know, we, we take certain days to honor when, you know, like Jimmy reminds us on a regular basis. We, you know, need to honor our veterans and honor our fallen every day. And, you know, I know how you love my stories. Have to tell a story and this, this is one that, you know.
Not on my side.
This is one that just came up recently. Because it's funny, because Facebook and different ancestor DNA, you know, opens people's eyes up to people they didn't know about, right? So, I mean, I've had calls from people, how do I show up on your ancestor DNA as the first cousin? I don't know who you are, I'm from Texas. You know, and it turned out my first cousin was her father and she never knew she was adopted. You know, and, and, you know, and, and things of that have come up. And, and the funny thing is, is our dog warden, Diane Frye. She, her husband, Jeff, was related to someone that turned out to know me, that I was related to. And we found out, you know, through marriage, that we're cousins. So that's, and then the girl, the young lady that lives in, I think she's in Virginia. She called me up and, and started talking. And here, my, my dad had five sisters and two brothers, there was eight of them. And his five sisters, one of his sisters, Dee, she was married and had two sons. And her husband was killed in the Battle of the Bulge in Bastogne. And the two sons were eight and six years old. And she ended up, she was the daughter of one of the two sons. And she called me because through Diane Frye and the dog warden and them talking and my name brought up from one of them. But I started talking with her and I told her the story that, that when I was the sales director at Thomas Steel, I used to go to Europe every month. And, you know, it, it got to be a pain in the butt, but I didn't realize, or I did at the time, you know, realize I had opportunities to go places that, that you could never afford to go on your own, you know, if you weren't there for work. So I would fly to, to Trier, Germany for work and then build miles up. And my wife would be able to fly over for free. And we'd stay there for a week and it only cost us food and room, you know, our hotel. And, I mean, it was such a blessing to be able to do that. And on one of my trips there, I was in Trier, Germany, and I had to go to Paris to do a presentation. So I had to drive to Luxembourg and take a flight to Paris. And when I came back, you know, and, and this is when there's no cell phones, no GPSs. I'm reading the map, this is like the late nineties, I'm reading the map on how to drive in Europe on the Autobahn. You know, and, and, I mean, and it took, and the one thing I learned real quick is don't go to an airport and rent a car in a foreign country unless you can read the map. You know, I mean, the signs on the roads are in Dutch, they're in German, you know, and, and it's like, holy Moses. But anyway, when I was going back from Luxembourg to Trier, I didn't realize that I went through Belgium. And as I was going through Belgium, I saw that there was a memorial there for the American soldiers that died in the Battle of the Bulge. And I ran up and found, I think it was seventy thousand Americans were killed or injured in the Battle of the Bulge in World War Two. And my, my dad's brother-in-law, my dad's sister's husband, was one of the ones killed there. And I believe he's in a mass grave there, because when there's so many people that die. You know, so I got to drive through and see that, you know, and, and I told her, the young lady that I was talking to, because that was her grandfather that was killed in the Battle of the Bulge. And she'd obviously never met him because her father was eight when he died. And, you know, and we talked and both of us were crying on the phone. And I said, I had no idea who he was. You know, I just knew that growing up, we were always told, my bro, my dad's brother Billy died at age twenty-six, right after World War Two. And their brother-in-law died during World War Two in the Battle of the Bulge at twenty-two years old. You know, so it's, it's so important for us to remember, to honor. You know, and, and in Austintown, we have such a great opportunity. On Veterans Day, you go and the choir sings all the fight songs for the, the different branches of the military. On Memorial Day, we walk down, you know, through the, through the community and end up at the high school and, and honor fallen soldiers. So it's, it's something that like Jimmy does, because Jimmy is a Vietnam veteran. And we should honor our veterans every day, all the time, you know, because in the blink of an eye, look at the people who are lost, you know, there, you don't have an opportunity. You know, we've, we're soon gonna lose every World War Two veteran. You know, it, it's just a matter of time, you know. But hey, so take the opportunity to thank a veteran that's still alive and honor the ones that have given the, the ultimate sacrifice on behalf of our country.
Okay.
That's my soapbox for today, sorry.
No, I, I agree. Real quick, four H, the two-for-one match that you get from the county and the programs that you have, this is a huge impact in our community for our, for our youth and for what you do in the agricultural community, which is a big portion of Mahoning County. We all enjoy going out to the farms and getting the peaches, the peppers and the tomatoes. It's all one. And I just want to thank you, you had a beautiful dinner the other night at Mr. Anthony's. The food was great, the baskets, the prizes. It was really, really special, got to meet, and you had the board member from Columbus.
Yes.
Who drove up and I forget his name.
Joel Orney.
That's it, he was very, very nice person. It was nice to meet him and hear his perspective and how much he admired this program and said it was one of the best in the state of Ohio. So that's a credit to all of you for what you do and I was just proud to be part of, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
It was a good time.
And I echo both, both the sentiments of my colleagues and I'm so proud of O S U. And let's face it, without you, where are our farms, farmers and farms? That's a business, big business today and we need to keep it local. And I always say that, I want to keep it local. We have great meatpacking homes, houses that you can get your fresh meats, can buy your steers and pigs and chickens from the four Hers at, at the fair and get just the freshest thing. So we do have, we do have that resource here in Mahoning County. We're lucky, we have rich soil, but thanks to everything you do. And it, I'm happy to see that a lot of children are going to be able to experience what you give. That's what's important, to get all the children, whether you live in Sebring, Canfield, Boardman, anywhere, city of Youngstown, Camel and Struthers, bring all of them together for that experience because they'll never know what it's all about until they come there and see how they eat, what foods they should eat and where it's from. So congrats, the event was great. And I want to thank our guests from Columbiana and everyone else that was here, Mark Luke, who always keeps us abreast of what's going on in Boardman. He will also have a parade in, as Austintown does now. So we look forward to that as well. So that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion? To adjourn. Next meeting Thursday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, ten a.m. Thank you, Dave, I was gonna say that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy?
Yes.